The held meeting to order is six thirty today, six thirty on November eleventh, no, November fourteenth, twenty twenty four. All meetings to order. Sign is infused. The rest of the boards in attendance, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice in common. I believe we have no public comment and input. Should I have someone to make a motion to consent the agenda from the meeting October tenth, twenty twenty four?
I make a motion to consent the agenda from the minutes from the meeting of October twenty twenty four.
Okay, first by Widdick, second by Study. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I said it, so moving on. Bear with me with my voice, it goes in and out. Sheriff's report, Sheriff's not here. I'm sure we will get a report from them at some point.
It's printed right in your packet.
Okay, we did ask the sheriff why our reports look different now, and they just went away from the format they were using. So we don't have that detailed list anymore, and it's just something they don't know anymore, which is kind of a bummer, but I do like to know where things are happening. I guess if you do have any questions, feel free to call the sheriff or ask Leteria to call for it on our behalf. So, there's a sheriff's report. Everything I have to report pretty much on the agenda, except for a resident did call me recently to share their displeasure for not being able to speak more at meetings. He did show me, like, the resident said, "I would really like to talk throughout the meeting, not just during public comment and input." I actually talked to Kendall about this, I think I actually called Ernie about this. A couple of things I thought, and he did show me a municipality that does let residents speak throughout meetings. I'm not changing anything at today's meeting, but I do want to, I do agree with Ernie in the regards of asking people to send emails to respond back if there's something that we're talking about at a meeting to give us feedback. I don't know if the board ever wants to consider putting public comment at the beginning and then asking for public comment at the end. I think asking for public comment during every single agenda item that we have would make the board meetings go forever long. But I would really like the board to consider if there's anything they would like to change. I know I'm just following Robert's rules of order, but other municipalities do do it a little bit differently, and I do have some information on that. So if you'd like me to, you know, you'd like to talk about that again, we're not going to change anything today, but it is something that came up from the last board meeting. Also, just two little things. The little libraries, I feel like I've been talking about this forever. So Terry has Linda's second one that she painted, we have one that's already installed, and then we just have one resident that gave a very large donation for the little libraries, and she was hoping for something a little bit more extravagant. So we just, we have three. We have two small and one large one that is actually from the little library that I think will last longer than the ones that Linda painted that we got off Amazon, but we're going to use all three of them for right now. Terry will probably be installing them next week, he's going to do kind of like a half circle, and I'm going to make signs that say, you know, something for the younger children, something for teens, and the bigger one will be for adults. So I feel like this has been like the ongoing project that never ends. I'm like, why is this such a deal? And then my last comment is just, I really would like to give a shout out to Terry and my husband because the windows had to be installed down in the gym, they had to be taken out and fixed in the gym, and in order to do that, Siding Limited told us in like the last week, "You have to remove those vest loops." Okay, that's a big job. So on Tuesday night, Terry and Charles went over there, and I just watched to make sure no one died. It was very scary, but they got them both down, they were, they had to actually take the brackets off the walls to take them down. It was a pain in the butt. I think John Leonard's going to help try and put them back up, but the three of them hopefully can do it, and maybe I'll be on standby to make sure no one dies. But the windows should be done down there by next week, because we don't want to move any rentals around. And then the windows in here, they're going to work around our schedule because Kendall and Kendall really talked to us about making sure we don't lose any rentals, and they really do have to work around our schedule. So these should be done as well fairly soon. This is the longest window project ever, and I'm ready to put it to bed. So I'm going to move on. I have things, if you don't say them, I'll come back to them, but trustee Hinkle, do you have anything to report?
Oh, no.
Trustee Johnson?
Question. I haven't looked at the ordinances, but a dog that does not shut up.
Just yapping?
Boy.
Okay. I think it said shut up. Like, I mean, I'm thinking, like, shut in. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, talk to Lou too, I mean, because it's, yeah, it's pure insanity.
Okay.
Yeah. No, it's a long part, but it doesn't stop when the patio doors open and you don't hear a word.
Is that a new resident?
In the last year. If you can go into detail, if you want. I mean, it's next to Lou, and it's the YouTuber kid that's a millionaire that is never, they bought the parents the house.
I don't know that story.
Yeah, yeah, so he bought a house and his dog stays there all the time.
Okay.
Well, he just spent nine hundred grand on a house and by pets, I think he can afford a park collar because it's, I mean, Lou, I'll look over there and just see him, and he'll text me, just, you know, going crazy. It's bad. It's bad.
What's, do you know the address?
No.
Okay.
It's right there in last house, Ernie won, Ernie left.
Oh, is it, it's the very last house?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Across from, from the Goss? Like before, like right next to his house?
Right in the very, behind it, yeah.
I don't know. I don't, I have that address.
Yeah.
Okay. I can't think of where.
You know, it's not like a dog going out and barking for thirty seconds.
All the time.
You know?
I know a child said this.
Yeah.
Because she got, there was a tree that was down her yard, and she was like, "What can you do?" And I said, "I can't really do anything, it's in your yard." So, I'm sorry.
Is that not a picket?
No, this is a second tree that fell, and I think it came from the back property, but I said, "You can call the Bex, because it's on the property that really is kind of down your responsibility. You can contact the office, and they can give you the number, but call your insurance company, because I think it's now your responsibility."
No, I was saying your property is.
Yes, I said, "I'm sorry." And it's not village.
Go back to the happy dog, yes, there's a happy dog though who says that it is in the garage pretty much all morning, doesn't shut up either. I don't fear that one, but it's, it's bad.
Okay, I will, we'll send them later.
Yeah.
And just, yeah, okay. Thank you. Nothing else for him?
No.
Trustee Rude, anything to report?
Not this time.
Well, I'm a sheriff, I have my head.
Oh, well.
Would you like to share? So, can I share?
You can share.
And then I'm going to pass it to you. I just want, we did talk about putting a tree in the park in Kurt's name, so Laura helped partner with us because I really want to hurt the tree. And she, and then go ahead, you tell the rest.
So I have a really pretty tree, it's called Autumn Fantasy. And I liked it so much, I bought one too. So one's behind the swing set, and then one is off to the right if you're coming into the park, you'll see it right there. So we're going to get shade eventually from the east, and then shade from the south. So I just think they're going to be nice. It's supposed to grow four to five feet a year, up to thirty to forty feet, so.
They just have to keep making sure that they're.
They're watering, yeah.
But right now, they're watering, so I just want that as my only concern, which I texted her yesterday. But thank you for bringing another one. And then I am still working on the brick, I found you that information for Brett, so that'll also be there, so I'll be contacting you to find out what we can put on. And then I'd like to maybe do the bracket, the, I got all things, I missed Kurt. Trustee Science absent, trustee Study?
I have nothing to report.
Do you have any events for me, trustee Study?
Turkey Tribe? That's coming up?
Yeah.
What's today? I don't remember.
Oh, Thanksgiving.
On Thanksgiving morning. Do we have gift cards?
I don't know. Do we have gift cards?
We have gift cards, yes.
Well, tomorrow.
Okay, and then Christmas party, but I think that's after the next board meeting.
Right.
I'm sorry. Trustee Bennett?
Nothing.
Any questions for your shop?
So that's the first thing on my list was about county events, so yes, we did have that Turkey Tribe, we can do some more cleaning if you'd like to, just to do some more, finalize that, and then the Christmas party is December seventh, I think that's before the.
Before. No, I'm asking to move the board meeting.
Oh, okay.
I asked, I talked to Kendall already, maybe she didn't tell you, maybe I didn't tell you.
I didn't want to confuse anyone by sending out a rescheduled email yet, so I was going to do it tomorrow or.
So you go through your stuff and I'll come back to you.
And then we're going to kind of talk about the flash and stop signs and intersection later, and tailor it a little bit, so we'll bring that up a little bit. The new storm contract is in full effect with Golden Smith, so we're really excited about that. They do use a preseason stake-in in certain areas, and then I'm responsible for putting out whatever I need.
And that's, that will be in the newsletter?
Yes.
We did contact them, Leteria met with her, and she's great.
Without a stake, without a stake, I'm thinking that she said she was on a stake?
No, well, go ahead.
They stake certain areas, but it's not like.
All of those.
Every resident's house, everything like that.
Yeah, so she said we can stake, they will do certain areas, but they're not going to stake the whole thing.
So they have like a reference point.
And people aren't heard to stake, unlike asphalt contracting saying they didn't want us to stake at all. She said, "No, please put out your stakes." The reason she doesn't want to do the entire village is because she does, she ends up losing like half of her stakes. They just people, people. And then she's buying more, so.
So there's a preseason stake-in, and then postseason, they come back out and get the stakes.
We're going to put it in the newsletter and say, "Must be out by."
I think that's a good idea.
March fifteenth or, you know.
Because that was a pain last year. And we can remind people in spring.
Yeah, and then Oscar newsletter.
But we can put it in this one and that one, just so people are aware.
For the newsletter, can you put just a reminder about no parking during snowing road season?
Or have them out by January third, won't get any snow.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
There you go.
For the newsletter.
Yeah.
Could we put a reminder that you have to have your car license currently licensed to be there? Because I know somebody who has a car that's not been licensed since 2019, and it's a stake in the yard.
Fill me in on that, see, you don't want the address?
It's in the email.
Okay.
Thirty-five.
I can send you an email.
Thirty-five, thirty.
Send it there. Because you can put it in the newsletter, but people don't really read it, but if we send them the letter, they do.
Yeah.
Send them the letter. Okay.
So the next thing is signing unlimited, they pretty much completed most of this building, so we think about like next week it should be completed, and then they'll put on the rest of the doors next week, and we went with the regular locks, because we needed lockers for the doors. So instead of having another temporary on there, we just went ahead and got the locks. And then we'll have a master key, so we won't have a thousand keys anymore.
Which is really bad.
But the tenants will have a key for the building, each individual building.
So a master key and then not a, yeah, so the, we went back and forth about the keypads, and it was just, this has been a really long project. Kurt, are you laughing at us? And we just figured this was a good way to go, so we're going to move forward. We do have a painter that we use that Kurt actually hired. Yeah, and we weren't quite sure about him. There were a couple of things, like he wasn't showing up, or he wouldn't, he'd come, and Terry would be here, and then wait for Terry, and Terry looks way around the corner, and I kind of gave him the riot act, and said, "Either you're doing your job or you're not, what are you going to be doing? I don't want to hire somebody, but I'd like you to get going." And so he is pretty much done, I think he finishes tomorrow, and then he has to come back and do the doors. And just so you know, Terry is doing a walkthrough with Leteria to look at all the windows and make sure everything is done properly. So that was a big concern of mine, I want to make sure it's all checked off and we feel confident in having all the work that's been done, so.
Yeah, so the next thing I was talking about was the painting, we painted.
Sorry.
So we already talked about it, so they did the final touches, so we're really excited to be done with all the projects. So that's awesome. And then back to the locks, like, if we want to get a lock for here as a padlock, that'd be a good idea still, just because it's a rental space, and we already have a padlock downstairs for the gym, so, you know, there's different people coming in and out, so that works really good, where you don't have to get a key out of the temporary lock code. And then for building two B, so we signed a five-year lease with State Farm, and then that also has like a renewal of another five years, so like a ten-year lease pretty much, because he definitely wants to stay ten years, so it's really exciting. So we only have one office space now, and building one that's vacant, and Randy is still working on that, so hopefully we can get that filled with like another therapist or something like that. So we're pretty much fully capacity with tenants, with long-term leases, and then another good thing is Evergreen Academy did reach out to us. Now they're in a lease from 2023 to August of 2025 this year, but they reached out and said they want to actually extend for another five years. So we're in the process, I reached out to Mark Kingston or Ernie to see if we can get it and done to lock in five years. So then we'll have really good leases for long-term tenants, and that's really awesome. Then.
And Mark sent you a mail today.
Yeah, it's exciting. And then for insurance, there wasn't a lot of changes at all, so it's pretty much around the same number for ballpark for the insurance.
And I just said, "Tell me, Jim," that's really good.
Yes, so we'll talk about that as well. And then we'll talk about the sewer, the water agreements, there's been a lot of talk on that, that begins to January twenty five, so it's going to break up, so we'll have a lot of insurance for everyone very soon. And then I did go to RCCIC meeting, and we're going to be hosting here in February. So that's pretty much my report for right now, and then we'll just revisit some of the things I touched base on, because it's already on my agenda.
And then treasurer's report, and I'm going to ask Kendall to speak about, she helps rent out our spaces here and in the gym. First treasurer's report, do you have anything to say?
The Kapoor thing? I don't know if that's an appropriate time. You know, you guys are working with Kapoor on the road project, but they cost money, but we haven't actually taken a loan out for the road project, so we're going to be paying the Kapoor bill.
Right.
With money that hasn't been designated for roads yet.
Right.
So just FYI, we'll have to figure that out and earmark that to be able to.
Move things along.
Account it later in 2025, once we take out another loan.
Okay.
That was just kind of brought to my attention today.
Yep. I don't know if we were real clear, they were clear on us, with us, that they were charging us for that time. It sounded like it was.
It was a surprise, yeah.
It sounded like it was more of a consultation.
Yeah, it was like.
I didn't know that they were, I was kind of surprised.
Me too.
Started the direct deposits today, so hopefully that'll all work out well. If you, it's not too late, so if you want to get me yours by, before the next meeting, it can be direct deposited instead of printed for you, so just let me know. That's about it for the treasurer part of it.
And then, yeah, Kendall, take it away about the pickleball court.
I had John Felbin, who is a part of the board for the Racine Area Pickleball Club, or whatever they call it, approached me about the use of the gym. They try to use all the free gyms throughout Racine, but there becomes a backup of, people have to wait, because there's a lot of people signed up, and so they're looking for even more spaces. We don't have pickleball court lines, that was one issue. Putting tape down and having all the rentals come through every week kind of sounds like it would be cumbersome, having constantly replace it. We got a few proposals or quotes on getting new lines put on the gym to be able to, since it's becoming so popular. He brought in one of his guides that's also a pickleball trainer who does floors, and they gave us a quote for eighteen hundred dollars to be able to put all the lines on and put wax on the floor, the complete floor, to redo it. With that proposal, he was willing to barter it, so we would only pay nine hundred dollars to get all the lines done and all the waxing done on the gym floor, for Jose to have time in the afternoons in the gym, for like three hours throughout the winter, to be able to teach people how to play pickleball. It wouldn't interfere with any other paid rentals that we would have, and it's just bartering that time, putting the cost in half to be able to get lines down. And so they're looking for like a win-win situation for Elmwood Park. They don't have the money to be able to pay an hourly rate that's high. It's a free, it usually is a free thing that they do in Racine at all the free gyms, but obviously we're not free, because we have to pay the bills to be able to keep lights on. So what he came up with was each person that comes with pickleball is going to pay two dollars a person, as many people that come in every day from like eight to eleven, all that money is ours. So every week, they would deposit that money to us. Then eleven to two-thirty, you have Jose's time where he's bartering that time for the gym floor, and then in the evening time, whatever days we don't rent the gym out, which is becoming far and few between, because I got a whole bunch of calls today for normal renters, they're going to use those hours as well for the two dollars per player to play pickleball. And again, all that money comes to us, they don't keep any of the two dollars per player. So it would be throughout April, we already gave them the go-ahead, because we met with them, I talked with Ally, and it seemed like it is a win for us, and if it ends up not being a win, we'll reevaluate it and we'll cut it off or make them pay us more. We think it'll be good, one, it's a community outreach, you have people from all over Racine County coming to play, learning about Elmwood Park, learning about our hall rentals, our gym rentals, so it could possibly bring in more revenue in those areas too. But if anyone has any concerns, I'd be happy to take that and make sure I consider it as we go forward with this.
And their nets are removable, like they're not putting anything else on the floor besides painting, you know? I think it's really a great deal of, to get the floor waxed, because it hasn't been done for a long time.
Yeah, it was eighteen hundred dollars.
Dying over there.
I got another quote from a professional company, and it was eighteen hundred dollars just to put the lines down, and that did not include buffing, buffing and waxing the entire gym floor.
What?
So it was a great deal.
Can you tell me later? Please, tell me later. We'll go. Right down Tom, and you and I can talk. Thank you. All right, moving on. Public hearing for the proposed Village of Elmwood Park budget for the year 2025, which I think is in progress. We've already pretty much approved the budget, do you want us to approve the budget again?
The public hearing is for the public.
Yeah, so.
So, anyone?
Get a copy of this budget to be posted, so that.
Would you like my copy?
It has been posted.
Do you have, you gotta have it posted.
I did.
Did you? Okay. Where is it posted, if I can ask you?
It's been posted on the website, outside our office, and then on the circle tree little posting.
Okay.
And it's also been posted in the newspaper.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I just, that was some comic relief for your trustee packets. It was in my black Dropbox this morning.
Okay. This one?
Yeah, and it had like a typed out little piece of paper that was taped to the envelope that said anonymous complaint on the outside.
Okay.
Yeah, that was fun.
All right. All right, moving on. New business. We need a resolution for 2024-25 approval of the 2025 operating tax levy to be collected in 2025. It should be in your, is there anything here?
No.
Maybe not. Or it's in this agenda packet. Can I find it, have anyone? Here it is, it's at the back of the packet. So, where is the Village of Elmwood Park, which shifts the levy a tax for the purposes of funding the 2025 operating budget, the resolution? Now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Elmwood Park approves the tax levy of three hundred and six, hundred thousand, two hundred and nineteen to be collected in the 2024-2025 tax collection season. Can I have someone? A motion?
A motion to approve resolution 2024-5, approval of the 2025 operating tax levy to be collected in 2025.
And a second?
Second.
First by Johnson, second by Hinkle. All in favor? All in discussion, I'm sorry, is there a discussion about anything? Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I say a bit, so moving on. Next, we need approval of 2025 Village of Elmwood Park operating budget appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the Village of Elmwood Park for the year 2025. And this would be the actual budget that had just passed away, just passed off. You have it in front of you, that's okay, I don't need it, I see it, I'm okay, I just get it, so. Does anyone, can I have a motion?
I move to approve the 2025 budget presented.
Second? Yes, Kendall just said it. It's been in the paper, it's outside our office, it's on the circle tree, it's on the website. Yeah. Oh, she just said it two minutes ago.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, Tom wondered if it, Tom asked the exact same question. Yeah, and Kendall just said it's been, it's all over everywhere, it needs to be, yeah, it's definitely taken care of. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, I say it so fast. Next, I put together, it's the discussion of the water and sewer agreement, and I want to give you something else. If you could pass one down to Linda, and here's one for you. Barb, pass it to down. So Mark Kingston did email me this afternoon at three o'clock, and he just wanted, and I'm just going to read this to you, or you can read it, but I'll leave it just so people can hear. And immediate, as the board meeting is this evening, first of all, I was looking at setting up a conference called MMV Engineers, which I'll explain in a moment, but immediate goal is to explore consultation with engineers to advise as to the feasibility or non-feasibility of various operations as a sanitary sewer system, both as to cost and engineering infrastructure. Mark has a call-in to North Bay's lawyer to compare notes, so to speak, and to assess where they are at with the process. Mark and Leteria and I have spoken of the possibility of establishing an ad hoc committee of village trustees, officials, interested residents, to consider the situation moving forward. It wouldn't need to be a large number, just a few to meet with me and you, Mark and I, to the extent necessary to move things along, and to that extent, I'd like to schedule a meeting for the near future. And tomorrow, Mark's going to forward a draft email that's going to go to the city attorney broaching some things, namely confirming that the village is assessing the sanitary sewer situation in good faith. We anticipate getting our specific position to him soon, and regardless, under no circumstances will the city be cutting off the sewer service. Also confirming that the village has received no formal communication whatsoever regarding water services and any desire to change the status quo. So please remember, it is a sewer agreement, and then this water agreement, they have not given us any information on the water agreement at all. So really, we're just focusing on the sewer right now. I put together a packet the other day of the very first letter, our very first agreement timeline notes are all my notes of all the things that have happened since January sixteenth, and we received a final letter in the mail, we had not received any other letters before then, nothing was ever given to us, but it was marked final notice. Then Paul Warrenholz, the current administrator, who is no longer the administrator for the city, emailed Leteria and I saying on Thursday, January eighteenth, that it was not a termination, and that might be in here, I have, we have all of this correspondence. Um, Letyria spoke to Paul the next day about the two thousand and two agreement. We are not part of the sewer pact. We wanted to know if they were raising our rates, did they administer the sewer lines? Um, Ernie and I had a very long conversation about this. Um, so these are all notes that I took. And Ernie and I spoke about just keeping a timeline of all the things that we were doing. Um, and then, nothing was really, the city was not coming back to us. They weren't telling us anything. I was pretty furious in August because we still hadn't heard anything. And I talked to, um, our new, our new, the new, um, city administrator, um, what is his name, Letyria, Jim Sullivan, at the RCC meeting in Mount Pleasant, and he was like, you need a new infrastructure. And I looked at it and said, I don't know how you think we can have a new infrastructure in twenty twenty-five, Jan- January twenty twenty-five, like, what are you talking about? The man does not live here. And I don't think that was helping for how small Elmwood Park is. Um, so I talked to Mark and then it really, things really got rolling, sort of. It was rolling on our end, but not on the city's end. Um, as you know, we met, Letyria and Mark met with them on Friday, September twentieth. It was very like wishy-washy. Mark came in and talked about that meeting. Then we set up another meeting on October sixteenth. I literally went downtown, called Letyria to find out in the room, and she's like, it was just canceled. Um, no, Mark was furious because he had to leave early from, like, uh, something he was in and he was not happy. Um, Mark, Letyria and I had a phone conference last Thursday. Um, and then included, he came up with the next page, which is all the things that he would like to see, um, that we're looking at answering. What is the cost to opt in? If we, we know that we will be taxed on all the back taxes, if we were to join the sewer pact? I have documentation from Keith Haas from years ago that Chris asked, and that's at the very end. And it just says, you know, note the dates because it's from quite a while ago. It's not current. So I put like little notes, note dates here. Um, and I have even more correspondence than this, but this was, I just figured these were some of the major pieces I wanted to pull. Um, is there a less costly option that the city will agree to? Uh, legal issue, does the city have the right to force village to opt into the two, two thousand and two intergovernmental agreement? Um, P S C does not have oversight jurisdiction as to sanitary sewer. Um, we need to get engineers, so that's something Mark is working on. He's working on working, talking to engineers to see how costly this would be for us. Um, if the cost is the same, cost of all scenarios, what are our options? Um, he would really like to set up an ad hoc group of residents, village officials, maybe a, a little bit of both, um, to regularly meet between now and the end of year to discuss and get a plan in place. So I do look at my residents that are here today. If anybody would like to join us, Tom, you're always chomping at the bit. I'd love to have you. Um, and then set a timeline and draft the appropriate agreement and comply with other legal requirements. Mark is on a very good job and you can see, so I included emails, um, from, from various different people. Also emails or letters that Mark has sent on our behalf. And I just ask you, I'm not going to read it to you, but I ask you to read thoroughly through it. Um, there's nothing we can do at this moment besides getting an ad hoc committee together. Um, but I just, I hope this is beneficial to you so you know what is going on. I know, Brian, you had talked about, we're always in the dark. Not always, but you know, there's certain things that sometimes you don't know, you feel like things aren't going. And I just felt like this was really good information that, I, I can talk about it all I want, but if you see it on paper sometimes, it makes more sense. Um, and I tried to put it in order, so hopefully it makes sense to you. If there's something that's missing, you're like, Ally, do you have this document? Because I, I just keep saving everything in the folder, so I'd be happy to get everything to you. Um, what questions, thoughts?
I have a question. I see Mark Slatter here from September twenty-sixth. And basically, um, when Chris was the administrator at Man House, rural village options in order to join the sewer agreement. So basically, blah, blah, blah. So in a nutshell, a hundred thousand dollars gets you in the game. And it's like, and then they're going to talk about other ones after that, like twenty-one thousand a year from this year to this year. So if we decide not to go with the pact, is that for the sewers or for the water?
This is all sewer. It has nothing to do with the water. Nothing. We have not gotten any information at all about the water. We have asked about the water and they have given us no information. They said, well, we've got to find the agreement. There's no agreement. We cannot find it anywhere. Actually, you might have found some. But not, yeah, it's, yeah, this is, but they, they don't have anything. We've asked them for it and they have not given us anything.
And so that's why the administrator was saying you had to get infrastructure. They want to get up all the, what we have under ground and just kind of say, we'll fix it everything. Is that what this is?
No, no, they just, no, I don't think so. Your, my, your guess is as good as mine.
Because I'm saying, okay, a hundred thousand dollars, what does that give us? You know, it's like, hey, to join, to join this sewer agreement, a hundred thousand dollars.
To do what?
To do what? It's, you know, and that's why I spoke about the water. And are they going to do something towards sewers?
It's very odd. But from my, my understanding, going to the scene, the, the R C I C meetings, which is all the presidents, mayors, everybody, they're like, they did the same thing to us. Caledonia said Mount Pleasant, I don't know if you even made attention, but they have Mount Pleasant and water and things out there, like.
What's happening to them when they're saying they did the same thing to us? Well, how do they?
It was in the middle of the meeting, so they did not clarify, and then I had a conversation with all, or, it's all over right after that. And I, I was like, I don't understand what they're trying to get us to do. And all, all he said was, come on, you have your own infrastructure. Well, we can't put in our own water tower. Like, what are you talking, that's what I think, when he says that's what we want. Like, where in Elmwood Park would we put a water tower? Do you know how small we are? Do you know we're landlocked? Like, it made no sense to me. So, well, I feel like we are spinning our wheels and not getting the city to tell us anything.
And that scared me. I just kind of wonder, why are they going to drop something and say, okay, this is what we have, and if you don't agree to it, you're screwed. And it's just like.
But, but Mark said, there's no way they can just turn it off. It's, there's no way they can just turn it off. Like, that's one.
Well, that's, that's probably the meaning.
It makes no more. Like, I think it's actually illegal for them to do that. Oh, Ernie, you missed. So, um, you missed all the stuff about the water and sewer. We're putting together an ad hoc committee if you'd like to join. Tom, would you like to join?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have any village board members? Is anybody else in the room that is here would like to join?
What are they going to meet?
We have not set dates yet. I could put you on there, or if you can make it. Okay, Erin, I'd love, Ernie, I, I would really like both of you being past presidents would be helpful. Um, is anybody on the, I will be on. Um, can I have any other board member join? John, Johnson, Brian Johnson?
Yeah, I got here.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so that would be a great, anybody, Lauren, good?
I'm good.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to reach out to Brad.
Brad J? That's a good, I will call him or email him. Um, so I hope this is helpful. Um, Ernie, if you would like, I, I guess, Tom and Ernie, I will get a packet to you. Um, Kendall, could you email them or you have extra?
Would you like email? Would you like paper?
You got them now, I'll take it.
I have one. So this is just, Ernie, we talked about the timeline that we set up, I, like, we, when we talked early in the year, like March. I set up a timeline of all the things that we have done on our end. Do you remember this conversation? And then, um, just a, a, a bunch of emails and letters, um, between the city and Mark Kingston, as well as some things back from when, from like two thousand and fifteen, even two thousand and two at the very end. Um, and in there is also like something from Mark of just things that we're planning on doing. So, um, take a look and I will be in touch as to when we can get together to meet with Mark. And we are planning on.
I can get it later from you, Kendall.
Um, you can give him that copy. No, okay. Um, I will, I made notes on mine. Tom, you could probably have mine. Would you like mine? Wait, please. Come here, sir. Let me just write down who I put on this ad hoc meeting. Um, Ernie, possibly Brad, Ally.
I'll get on Brad tomorrow.
There, you can have this one. Thank you. I will be in touch. Um, we may have a conference call on, for Mark and I, this, this, um, engineer may have a conference call Monday if they can make it at four thirty. And then after we hear from the, the engineer, then we will probably set up a meeting to try and get together to talk through some of these things and see what our next steps are. Um, I have had, um, Kelly, who's not here tonight, Kelly Stein, asked if we want to go forward in the paper. Um, I am a little hesitant to do that first. Ernie and I have talked about this a couple of times. Um, I, I don't want to be in bad faith to the county, to the city. I don't want to make anyone mad. We're trying to, to go about the right route for this, um, and, but let's, let's just start here. So we're not going paper, we're not involving, getting anybody upset, and the, we don't know what this is yet. Um, and I do feel like Mark is really putting in a lot of time for us, so, um, we're working hard. Um, anybody have any questions? Okay.
I think it was interesting that you met with Cory Mason.
He didn't meet with us.
I know, but you had seen him at a meeting, didn't you say?
She did.
You, okay, it was Letyria. I mean, you said you'd like to meet with him. He says, oh, yeah, yeah, I'll sign it up, and then nothing.
Yep.
Um, he said I would meet with the city administrator because he would handle it and then, um.
We tried to get Cory to come to a meeting and then that was the one that's canceled.
Yeah, that one. And they said, you know, you guys are all here, so, um, we got everyone that's, um, in our administration, administration here for the meeting, as well as all of the hits that are.
I saw him last, so. I saw him out in public and really wanted to say something, but I did not.
Yeah, so, um, maybe we can try and do that in schedule two.
I don't, I, I, he is a hard man to deal with. Um, and I know Cory, I've known Cory Mason for a really long time, went on before I was on board. And he knows me from not being on the board, and I, I have no patience for him right now. Um, so, we'll see. So I will be in touch with the two of you. I'll call, I'll talk to Brad and see if he's interested, and then we'll both in there. And thank you, Brian, for also sending. Um, okay, next, discussion of possible approval of municipal insurance for twenty twenty-five. Do you want to go ahead and share?
Yes, there weren't a lot of changes. I did, like, I did, we did the improvements and things like that, but they said, they basically said that you, um, swapped the old for new, and there's already that, uh, coverage on there, so it doesn't really need to change much. It's covered on the white. Um, it is not like a whole lot of change. So it's still in the same ballpark. Um, so it's about a five hundred dollar difference for a premium. If you look at the bottom in the blue, that's a bigger premium. It's like in the middle of the sheet paper here. So last year was thirteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. This year will be twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars. And that's a, all the renovations and everything that happened.
So they walked around, they kind of did an assessment of the whole village, uh, the parks and the windows and things like that, and the B and.
So I recorded everything we did and basically it was already covered. So it wasn't anything that needed to really come out in the day.
Well, it's good to see the premium go down.
Yeah, that was nice. Um, then the cybersecurity, we really don't have that, so we didn't need that again this year. There's something they talked about a lot at the R C C I C meeting yesterday, you know, um, a lot of municipalities are joining to, uh, get coverage for cybersecurity. That's something that's in the future for us.
Okay. Good idea.
Yeah, so I was excited, um, that this wasn't drastic or anything. And Nancy came in last year and did her presentation, and it wasn't anything she needed to do. And then today she did it virtually, so she was just didn't come. Um, just because we kind of understood from last year. But if you guys have any other questions, I could bring her on, maybe think of anything. Um, but again, it's pretty much the same.
I haven't put that online today. It was like forty-five pages.
Oh, yeah.
Write it down, it's like, wow.
So much information, yeah.
Um, okay. Do we want to approve the municipal insurance for twenty twenty-five? Can I have someone approve?
I move to, um, what do we do? I move to approve the insurance from our, our insurance for the year twenty twenty-five.
Second? Okay. First by Ruth, second by Stewie. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ice habits, okay. All right, next, I also, I was really excited to give you a present today, not all the stuff I was doing. Um, when I can't talk, this is what I do with her. So, we've been talking for a long time about our concerns at Laker and Taylor, and the amount of accidents that happened, have happened. And Letyria looked into flashing stop signs. Um, I emailed, I actually, again, called my friend Ernie Rossi and just said, hey, what do you know? Now that you're one of our county supervisors and can help us out. Um, and he suggested I can talk to Raleigh in Racine County, and then I also got ahold of Chris Gallagher. And I put this, this is the first letter I sent. Um, Chris responded with a few concerns and questions. Um, the very last page of this packet, I do want to point out, is all of the accidents. I think I sent this to Lauren Brown because I talk to you about it often. Um, but do you know that some of these accidents are on here more than once? And that is kind of like Racine County, Mount Pleasant, and Elmwood Park, all at one intersection. So they could be calling various dispatchers, um, or various dispatchers could be picking it up. So Lauren did the exact same thing I did. You did all the work and I did all the work and we were like comparing. I was like, I just did this too. Um, we wanted to see when the accidents were happening. Ernie thought maybe it was during school day. It really is not, it's not a drop-off, it's not a pick-up. Pick-up, sometimes it's in the middle of the day, but it has nothing to do with the school. I ruled that out and told Chris, I really, this, I, we can't say that this is a B B school issue or an Evergreen school issue. Um, some of them are late at night. Um, some of them are on the weekends, some of them are Sunday mornings or like, you know, they're, they're very, it's, it's not the same time every time. Um, there's a lot of accidents though.
Yeah.
And they don't, they were like, we don't think the stop signs are the issues. I'm like, people are just blowing the stop signs or they're.
I mean, if you look at it, right, of, in twenty, in twenty twenty, there were, eh, six, right? Twenty twenty-two, there were two. Twenty-three, there were two. I mean, so, yeah, I guess it does, it kind of makes sense, but it just goes to prove that people are driving like idiots, you know? And whether you want to believe it or not, it started with COVID, right? As the father of a police officer, now, whatever she is, special agent, they were told, don't pull anybody over. So what does it make everybody do? Drive and go through stop signs two at a time and, you know.
So.
Continually do.
They did do a traffic study. And you'll see, and that's the page right before all the accidents, they did a traffic study just from, from three o'clock to three thirty, basically. And they, and I said, I, I haven't heard back from Chris yet. But I said, I'd like to know if we could do this either earlier in the morning when people are on their way to work, or later in the afternoon when people are leaving work to see what the difference is. Um, because this is, this is not a time that people are necessarily leaving work, but like four thirty, five o'clock might be better. I said, could, I would, I would volunteer if I could to go sit out there and just watch. You could tell me what to do. I'm not a traffic specialist, but, um, I'm just waiting for it to hear from him. So I just brought this to you because I wanted to make sure you knew that we are like trying everything we can to find out. The, the flashing stop signs, he didn't know if would make a difference. Ernie and, Ernie and I talk, I, I call Ernie like once a month, right? Maybe twice a month. Um, we didn't know if a stoplight would be better, and that's kind of what I wanted to see from them. Like, do they feel like this would be good for a stoplight or no? Um, I know I drove out to Union Grove a while ago and took, took Taylor, and there were like twenty cars backed up, headed towards, you know, headed east. And they were just backed up, and it, it's crazy. I was like, I think the traffic pattern has changed and you're not paying attention to it. And I don't know if that's because of all the work they did on K R, and people are not, you know, I don't know. Something's happening. Right, right. And that's a straight shot into the city.
But it's still dark, and I think we talked about last time, still coming west. How many times do we face in either way, or especially coming north on Lathrop? And you see what the car kind of doing this, like, wait, oh, I got to stop up there. So it's that hesitation because they have to, they think they're going to stop, but then the line is up in the front there too. So there's a lot of, I mean, it's just, it's a nightmare.
There is definitely some, some concerns. So feel free to peruse and read the emails and see what they said. Um, and let me know if there's anything you want me to share with him, that you're noticing, Brian. If there's anything that you've noticed, um, that you want me to share that I didn't share, uh, I'd be happy to. Um, I do feel like the lines of communication are open and we've got something going. We just don't know where it's going to go. I don't think it's going to be ignored. I'm hoping we come up with something that's more than just, we're going to stick with the four ways out. I don't know.
And then the last, they, they'd say that they're looking at renewals and proposals for the intersections or on intersection studies. So, um, hopefully we can come up with something. I did talk to, uh, the director at Evergreen Academy too, and she kind of said it was okay, pretty much. Um, but again, we're here seeing like seventy percent more accidents than this, this year, pretty much. It's just seeming like all the accidents are this year.
So, I wonder now if the city or the county does something with Lathrop, which is, it's supposed to be June in twenty twenty-five. They're going to be doing the Lathrop. And I thought, I'm going to, they. Um, and I thought, could they put a roundabout there?
Too big.
It's too big.
Way too big.
Okay.
Right? Way too big. I, I thought, I've talked to Charles, and he's like, there's no way that would take out people's property.
Hit me a lot in the domain, sorry.
It's, it's too big. It's way too big.
Okay. And I noticed that the city said that.
I love the roundabout, though. Don't get me wrong, I love a roundabout.
And I noticed the city said that if we wanted to get the flashing stop signs, they will not help pay for that. And then also, they said that if we feel it was too dark in the area, they will not pay for any type of lighting either. Has anybody, have we approached Mount Pleasant about that, and started anything?
No, I've started the city first, or the county first, and then, um, we'll just start there and see if there's anything that they could do. Um, I don't know if it was dead in the water that they wouldn't pay for anything. I think, though, that, yes, they were like, I'm, and I was like, well, could we split the cost between three, could we talk to Mount Pleasant? You know, so.
I was disappointed to see that, it was like, you know what, that's your road.
Yeah, it is. They won't let us do anything to it, but they want, they want to be.
Yeah, I'm hoping. They, it is a possibility. We don't know if it's approved yet, but we are on the, on the ticket for a possible approval, but they have a lot of projects that they're dealing with, so I just don't know if it's going to be done or not. But I know we're, a possibility to be done.
And there's conversations going on, so that's, that's.
It looks even crazier to think about, how many accidents are on Chitauri and Lake River about the four-way stop?
None, right?
Nothing.
So, why is that? I think the traffic pattern has changed.
It's just people racing to get through Elmwood. And there's no other.
They're getting away from that yappy dog. They're getting away from that yappy dog.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
I don't know. Okay. Nothing to approve, I just want to bring it to your attention, and please, if there is something in here that you want me to talk to Public Works about, I will gladly bring it up to them, if there's something I did not respond or talk about. Um, the last point of discussion before our approval of accounts payable is the Elmwood Park Road Project. Um, so, again, we have, there's like a email from L R C. And I want to know if we're comfortable moving forward with the project. It's supposed to be road, phase two for the roads.
We were getting, we're going to do the two cul-de-sacs, and then even wheel lock, because, I mean, we talked about wheel lock being seven houses, but I mean, there's like, people are going to start to lose their cars on wheel lock pretty soon.
I think we can change anything we want. I don't know if they sent us anything new from, from them with, like, this is how much it would cost, because you have to put the bid out anyways. Of like, okay, we're going to bid it out, and we're just going to move the roads. Um, so, it's a big project, this one makes news. So, if you see the very first email from Greg, you don't want to borrow one point five million, or, if you remember correctly, and I don't have people working for me, I probably have my backpack. Um, it did not cost that much for the first part of the project. We actually don't quite have been under it, but you don't know what you're going to hit when you go under the road. Sometimes it's worse than you thought it was going to be. We were lucky in the first phase that it went really, really, it was pretty good. Um.
I have a concern about the lighting, though. We have some problems with the underground cracking and outages from here, this one, and it's just, that, that concerns with the next phase now. I mean, is that going to be something that the board should look at and say, hey, how can we address this?
Well, I think it has to be two separate projects. It can't be, if, if you do part, you can't do part of it without doing all of it, and we could swap out and say, we're not doing the roads and only doing the lighting instead, and get, put bids out for lights instead of roads. Um, but I don't think it, we can't do like, we're just going to do this part of the village for lights and then do later. I, I think, so we have to make a decision on what you think. I don't know how people would feel about not having their road done. I don't know. That's why I'm coming to you, that I'm not going to leave.
That's a good point, but then people also like to have the lights, and we hear a lot about, oh, my lights don't work, streets dark.
Yeah, well, you need the infrastructure fixed.
Especially the I C C, the park, is that anything there, right?
No. I think it's really hard to do that without fixing all of them. From what we, we had R C I C, R I C come out, didn't we? And there was really nothing.
Yeah, they fixed, they patched up what they could, and I think pretty much everything's working, so.
Oh, so that's okay.
They wouldn't fix that, and, but, and we had about five calls, a lot of calls.
So, the one that was.
But I'm not on the line, sir, because, I think totally removed the whole light from over there, a couple months ago.
Uh-huh. No. I actually was thinking about that today. So, what do you guys feel? What are your thoughts? Do you?
Did the, did the problem with the lights start when they did the roads?
Yes.
Because they went underground with the wire?
Yes.
So, I say, they can have the streetlights, but my house is way too bright. And it's not. But that's because our roads haven't been done.
What's the projected start date for us?
Like, March, I think.
Of twenty twenty-five. Um, so, we are still.
We would have to put the bid out, hopefully before the end of the year, to see who we bid on the roads. But if we switch it to the lights.
Do you have your bids for both?
I don't know what's the priority. I mean, the roads are mine, I'm here.
My opinion is the roads.
I know, too.
Do you, Laura, would you, would you like to see if I can do a bid for both, and at least we can compare? Or have we, I feel like we've done the bid for the lights, or we've actually looked into it before?
I think we did that originally, or, uh, longer.
It was like seven fifty or eight hundred.
Yeah, we did a lot of it. Um, but now, I think it's up to the board, the board feels the roads need to be done. Why waste time getting a bid for the lights?
Okay.
But I don't know if we can talk to the road people and say, is it possible to avoid getting, I mean, there cracking on these things?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, on that note, have the manhole cover raised and sat there yet?
Did they come out and fix oak tree lane?
They're scheduled to come next week.
Okay.
Do you know what, yeah?
Uh, firms.
Okay. So, I will move forward. Um, can you just tell me, when we talked last, you want us to look at adding wheel lock in there?
No, it was on phase two.
Okay.
It was Kensington Court that wasn't on.
Right.
Yeah, the northern, yeah.
You would like Kensington Court to be.
It kind of makes sense.
Yes.
Or you can come back and do roads and tear those up to, right, I mean.
Yeah.
And look at the cost of a couple other roads in that same, you know, like, right, I could get, just do it and be done.
And the other half of the circle, which would be like North Elmwood and South Elmwood and Sandish, that, by Kendall's house, all the way by Inkle's house, all the way by the park, has not been done. Wait, it has been done by your house.
What is?
Just the South Elmwood.
Just the South Elmwood, but not by the park, not done, and not all the way up from Kendall's house to Ernie's house, all the way where.
That's all the northwest area.
Yeah, and almost Inkle's house, yeah, okay. Um, are there any other roads that you're, you know, then we, then we have phase three, which would be, who's going to be Matt, Green Meadow.
Sarah Hogan.
And Taylor. Yeah. No, um, yeah, Taylor's actually in really good shape. Um, okay. So, I will, we will talk to them and see if they can start the next phase of putting out bids, but I do think we need to make sure whoever the engineers are on the roads knows that that was a big concern of ours. And it's just the way it's, they are underneath stupid lines. And maybe this will all be kaput, because we're getting new sewers, who knows, which would be a pain. Let's not hope not. I hope that's out of the gate. Um, okay. Anything else about that? There's not, no approval either, we can move forward in the process, and hopefully we'll have more reports. I did not mention, before I go on, before I adjourn the meeting, um, I would like to change the date. Is everybody okay with changing the next board meeting to the December fifth? I have something happening on the twelfth. It's a Thursday, it's the first Thursday of the month rather than the second Thursday. I figured, I was farther away from Christmas, might be.
Yeah, sure.
Things get busy. Um, so, Kendall will send out a reminder about that and a date change, um, but thank you for coming.
Kendall, there's something with the lights.
Yes.
Is there an option that if we look into that, is a solar option?
Oh, you.
Yeah, it was really good.
Sort of.
Kendall, we touched on that.
That way, it could be potentially a lot cheaper and a lot less time digging up roads and whatnot. The other thing could be, is if there's an outage, we still have streetlights.
For my experience, opportunities have fallen as well.
So, there are a lot of areas actually out there.
Energy.
Yeah.
The sun, interesting.
It's been a for a while.
Okay, I'm putting you on that project. Can you start looking?
I will, I'll do it.
Okay, that's great. Um, that'd be an interesting, I mean, those are old lights, and maybe the, the possibility isn't, um, the wires, maybe we do something different.
Just have to remember about the winter months, not having a less sun.
Well, then Ken, Ken is going to be the lamplighter, and he's going to go around to each light and hold a flashlight above them, so they turn on.
There you go.
We can mystery to a lamplighter.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll look into it. I'm sure there are ways around that. For example, different batteries and.
Yeah.
Very low, um, use, electricity use, lights, like L E D and all that kind of stuff. And I'm sure if we looked into a little bit, you know, maybe we could have a guy come out and, and explain how it all works.
Do we know how much the lights cost us?
Well, we know that if we put new lights, it'd be about eight hundred thousand. Oh, like for the electric.
How much do costs us each month?
I don't, Kendall, do we know how much the lights cost us? Come on, off the top of your head, you're really good at this.
Oh, gosh. You don't, yeah, I, I can only give you a guest estimate, that is like a hundred a month.
A hundred dollars?
Yeah. Hundred, hundred fifty.
That's it. Wow.
There's a line item in your, um, QuickBooks printout there, um, it's going to be, it'll say streetlights. I don't have one in front of me, so I can't tell you where it is.
I can bring it back.
Tom's lighting. Is it on page?
Would that be for all the streetlights, though, in, in the whole village?
Okay.
For Tom's lighting?
No, street lighting. Or streetlight.
Street lighting.
Where'd you find it? Winter, winter, chicken dinner. You won. You're going to be the new lamplighter.
I'm not playing. On your public work, street lighting.
So, he's on seven hundred fifty-four.
My guess, it's wrong. So, divide that by like.
By twelve.
Three hundred and seventy.
Well, no, because we haven't had twelve months yet.
Three hundred and seventy. Three hundred bucks.
It's over, yeah, it's over three.
Oh, that's really cheap. Let's move on to the.
I'm wondering what that includes. Does that adhere to complex, and village?
Yes.
It does?
So, kind of, twenty grand.
Okay.
It's that one, like, was on one of the buildings, so.
Yeah, turn on. That's a nicer. That's true, that's a good point.
But at least we have, we have four or five, so, can we speak for the lights?
Um, I don't know if the other. We could also, I think I passed it down to them first.
Yeah, I didn't.
Oh, Ken didn't pass it to you, or maybe we're.
Nobody's lit.
Um, also, one thing we could check, I don't know, when we do the streets, they do, we put sleeves around wires now, and I don't know if they're just degraded, and those wires are all degraded. So, I don't even know if it's worth talking to anybody about fixing it and keeping what we have. I don't, I don't think so.
Because they're just corroding.
Yes, they're pretty bad. Um, okay, moving on to the last piece of business, which I lost just a minute ago, somewhere. Okay, resolution for the approval of accounts payable.
I move to approve the accounts payable.
Second? First by trustee Hinkle, second by trustee Witt. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Eyes count it, and we are done at seven thirty-five.